Who called the meeting to order?
It's hot here.
Sorry, I'd say that.
At 6:02. All present, with the exception of Jerry, who will not be here. Family issue takes precedence there.
If he wasn't there, it would become an issue.
An agenda item that I would like struck for this time would be item L, consideration to cut a 1-0 elementary PE position. Jerry would like to be here for some input on that. I think that's fair. It's a tough decision that I think everybody should be here for. So we're going to postpone that part of the agenda to the next upcoming meeting. Does anybody else have any additions, subtractions, changes of any kind they would like on the agenda? If not, I would look for a motion to approve with that amendment.
Motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Scheduled presenters. Jerry, we put you off a little bit. Thank you for your patience.
Trans. We had to do all of the tournaments. Good evening. I think most of you know me. I'm Sherri Johnson. I'm the executive director of the Education District. And I came, I'm actually going around to all of the member district boards, just bringing you up to date on a facility study that we are in the middle of, just so you're along in the process, when and if we get to a point where we need to bring it back for some consideration and a possible vote on your. So tonight, I'm going to update you on the facility study. We currently, as you know, operate cooperative programs on behalf of our member districts. Those programs are housed in three leased sites. One of those leased sites is Jefferson in the Red Wing School District, and two of them are the Cannon Falls Community Center, the Riverside Program, and the Wastito site, which are housed in your district. While the current leased facilities have served our district adequately to date, the combination of deferred maintenance needs, inadequate educational spaces for some of the programs, and insufficient square footage for current and future programming present immediate challenges to meet our student needs. These conditions, in combination with a need to achieve better cost efficiencies in the future, have prompted us to initiate a facility study. Through this analysis, we hope to identify some options that will be cost benefit to our member districts. We are focusing on three potential options as an outcome to this study. One would be to expand and remodel at one of our existing leased sites. A second would be to purchase and retrofit an existing building available in the county. And a third would be to construct a new building on a site to be determined, somewhere in the county. We are currently using all of our space and are exploring expansion in the area of alternative education. It looks like next school year, we will be expanding in the area of a middle-level ALC In doing that, we would open up targeted services as an option for each of our individual members. And some of our individual members do not have targeted services at the elementary level, and this would give them some options. So with the necessity of identifying yet more space to lease, and the knowledge that there are long-term maintenance issues with our current sites, our board determined that we should figure out a long-range plan. Last fall, the Facility Committee was formed to begin this work. Dave Davison, who is sitting in the audience as part of that committee, Derek has sat in some of those meetings, as has Sharon Noble. This group reviewed some initial data and made a recommendation to our board to solicit an outside agency to complete a study of our options, which will culminate in a matrix of pros and cons for the options. This study is currently being conducted by Springstead. Springstead's consulting team is being led by Don Lifto. Don has over 25 years of superintendency experience, and he has superintendency experience in intermediate districts, which is a very similar structure to our own, which makes him a very good choice for us. Joining him on his team are Roger and Kay Warner. They are the educational consultants, so they are looking at what does an adequate room look like educationally, what should be available to our students. Rounding out that team is Krause Anderson, and their representative is John Hewnick. He is looking at the bricks and mortar, that kind of structure, things I would never normally notice. And he brings over 20 years' experience as well. So the key elements in the study are to conduct in-depth interviews with key stakeholders. We have conducted over 40 interviews on member district board members, superintendents, principals, teachers. Gather and analyze enrollment, finance, program, service staffing, and other applicable status and trend data. Evaluate transportation data. Complete space utilization analyses and how they relate to the impact on students and staff, and the effects of construction costs and operational costs. Perform facility and educational evaluation of the three buildings currently leased by the ed district to ascertain their educational adequacy and potential for meeting the district's needs in the future. Perform facility and educational evaluation of one currently existing and available building within the geography of the district to determine if a retrofit would be appropriate. Research and evaluate different pieces of property to determine if there are good options in terms of infrastructure, cost, location, constructability, and city zoning. Evaluate potential for constructing a new building on a site in terms of feasibility and cost effectiveness. And then compare and contrast all of those options in terms of educational adequacy, cost, financing options, and tax impact. Once complete in early May, their work will be presented to the Facility Committee. That Facility Committee will then make a recommendation to the GCEE Board. That Board will then take action of some kind on that recommendation. At that point, I will then be going out to each of the member district boards to get your feedback. Questions you might have for me at this time. So we're not very far away from having that study complete. I spent most of the day today meeting with architects and different researchers on the question of, oh, our current spaces look like, what are we looking at for future development? Where are we at? I'm learning a lot in this process.
How big of an urgency is this? Is this like a one-, two-year plan, or a two-to-three-year, three-to-five-year plan?
I would say we're aiming for a 10-year plan. We have been out of space, well, we were out of space a couple of years ago. That's when we located the Cannon Falls Community Center as an option. So we've continually been growing, and it goes beyond the growth issue. Right now, we don't have any closets left, so I don't have places to put literacy coaches or those supports that the member districts are asking for. But in addition to that, we're looking at some ALC options. We do not have classrooms for those. It looks like next year, I'll actually be leasing a room from one of our member districts. In addition to that, though, the deferred maintenance cost on our facilities is staggering. And we have not done maintenance on even the Wastito site for quite a while. Of the three sites, that site is the site that's in the worst physical condition. So we, whether, even if we decided to do nothing, and the message back to me was, "Don't build programs. Don't do anything else programmatically," we would still have to face millions of dollars in deferred maintenance issues. So there's a cost to us, even if we choose to do nothing. There's an increase to our tax capacity right now if we choose to do nothing.
Do you foresee the districts have, with the economic state that we're all in right now, you know, if you went to build a new site, and say it ended up being in Red Wing, and we had to transport all of our kids to Red Wing, and the cost that you charge back to the group districts is so much more, do you foresee that being a problem? I mean, as a cost for us?
I think transportation is going to be one of the leading reasons why we need this.
Right now, we have it nice, because we've got Riverside, and we've got Wastito, but a school like Cannon One Amingo driving all the way over to Red Wing, do you foresee...
I don't see that as a deal breaker. The, in the 47 interviews we've done, none of the districts have considered that a deal breaker, even Cannon One Amingo. I was not a part of that. I just got the reports from the interviews.
I just think a site like Wastito...
Because most of them are already, everyone's transporting to Red Wing already, plus they're transporting to Wastito, except Goodyear, to Wastito and to the Cannon Falls Community Center. So transporting to one site, wherever it is, is a cost savings. That's a great question, and it will be a huge part of the matrix.
I just, I foresee problems for Cannon Falls being able to afford a new facility. And we're having trouble affording things here. So I just, I'm glad you got the committee going.
We would be doing it through Certificates of Participation, which is another board meeting, just to kind of explain how that mechanism works. You currently have a lease levy that goes to all of your taxpayers. Whether we choose, whether we decide to remodel, like let's say Wastito, and of the three sites we own, in complete transparency, the Jefferson site is not an option, because we don't own the surrounding property. You'd actually have to purchase one of the city blocks surrounding it. That's not feasible. The Riverside site, you only own about a foot beyond the outside of the building, and you cannot build up. So that is not a feasible outcome to the study. We've looked at that. We've determined the cost of bringing those buildings up to code, and that it's not a feasible site. So of the three, Wastito would be the only one. The acreage may or may not be sufficient. You could probably do a two-level building there, but there are additional transportation costs with that as well. But all of those will be part of the options that the Board will be ultimately faced with.
Any other questions? Comments?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you. Just because we wear the same color, does it mean you could steal my heat?
I'll find out.
Every meeting, we're the same color. We do.
Okay. Having no old business, we'll move on to new business under item A, consideration to accept the retirement request from Laura Hemmott at the close of the 1213 school year.
Right. Most of you, I guess everyone at this table knows who Laura Hemmott is. She has been an integral part of our elementary school for a very long time, and on our special ed team, worked with a lot of kids, and obviously going to be very missed. I foresee her being very active still in our schools, though, so we want to wish her luck and in her retirement.
I'll make a motion to accept, please.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Pat. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And with the exception of just a couple of items on here, just to reinforce, these are things that we talked about at the last meeting during our discussion phase, so we're now on to the action phase. Item B, consideration to approve John Fogarty as a .4 FTE English teacher for the upcoming school year.
There's been kind of a standing joke between Roz Germsdott and John Fogarty, who gets the number-one slot on the seniority list. And as you all know, Roz has decided to retire, and John has now decided to be .4, and he's working with Mr. Hodges on making a system and a schedule that can make that work, and we want to congratulate him on going part-time. This is his choice. That means Mr. Hodges will be hiring a .6 English teacher. This is not a reduction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Brenda. Further discussion?
How do you see hiring the .6, is that something that's going to be feasible, easy?
I can't believe you had an answer to that. I don't believe it's going to be a technical challenge.
Okay. Not like a science.
No.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the resignation from Carly Moore at the close of the 201213 school year.
Yes, Carly Moore is currently teaching high school math for us, and has decided to go on to other things, and so we wish her the best of luck. Again, not a reduction. It will be something Mr. Hodges is hiring for again.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Kurt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Proposal to add to required reading and math interventions for students who show the need in grades six through 10.
This one's Mr. Hodges.
This comes as a recommendation from the Curriculum Committee. Some of the reductions and some of the changes at the high school level have created the opportunity to create a true intervention system, kind of think of it as middle school, high school, RTI, likes being done at the elementary school right now. So the proposal is this, is that students who show a need in reading or math will go into an intervention-type class. Those will look different depending on the grade level. We're thinking that in the middle school level, kids will be in that class for, you know, anywhere from a month up to maybe a semester, depending on the need that they show. But since our middle school classes, or in middle school, we don't have a credit-based system to move on to the next grade level, we can move kids in and out of classes, you know, without affecting that credit limit. At the high school level, things are a little bit different, because we do have credits that we have to deal with. So if we have students in ninth or 10th grade that show a need in some way to get extra help in reading or math, then kids will be scheduled into an intervention-type class, and that will count as an elective credit for them in their graduate, credits for graduation. So we're going to look at a couple of different data points to determine the students who need that. One of those data points will be our MCA testing, which we start here next week. And we're also going to be adding a math and reading assessment, some type of curriculum-based assessment. We've looked at STAR assessments. We've looked at AIMS Web. We've looked at the NWA tests, and we're still trying to decide exactly what we want to use with that, but that will also determine, help determine which students show a need. And then we'll get those kids in, get them the interventions that they need, get them out of that, and back into their regular setting. So kind of, if you think of it this way, traditionally, what we've done, especially in math, is if a student is struggling in math, they've gone into a lower-track math class, one that has lesser standards or completely different standards. Now, we're going to go with the approach that those kids will stay in whatever class that they're scheduled to be in, but they'll get additional support. So instead of a different math, it will be additional math to help them get back to where they need to be. So, and one of the keys to making this work, I believe, is making sure that this is a requirement of students. I talked about it at our staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. You know, although we expect our kids to be responsible, we expect our kids to be mature, sometimes students choose to not do well in classes, and I don't feel like, as educators, we should be allowing kids to make that type of choice to not do well and to not get the help they need. And I think it's in our best interest, and it's an obligation that we have to make sure the kids, that we help kids that need, that show that they need help.
Part of this, too, is you're shifting, you're no longer going to have the seventh-grade reading position.
Yeah. So how this all comes about is actually, it's down a little bit, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. There are a couple of pieces there. When Roz Germsdott retired, Renee Otto requested to be that teacher, and that's later on in your list, as to my recommendation to have Renee switch to be that sixth-grade language arts teacher, which left Renee's position open. And currently, Renee teaches in sixth grade a trimester class, so 12-week class that is MCA math. So it's Minnesota sixth-grade math standards. In seventh and eighth grade, she does an MCA reading class for a quarter. And then part of her time is special ed, is doing the Read 180 program for our real struggling reading students in special ed. It's kind of, that approach is kind of a shotgun approach at a problem. You know, we have 90 kids in a grade, and we're giving them all extra reading that they don't necessarily need. So we're going to take a little bit more of a surgical approach to this and identify the students that need the help in those areas, and we're going to give those students the additional help that they need. So we've got, we've got kids in, you know, in all of those grades that don't need extra help in math, they don't need extra help in reading. It's nice that we're giving them that now, but it's not really benefiting them, and we could benefit more students, I believe, by taking a more precise approach to our interventions.
I'd make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Pat. Further discussion, Rob?
With these changes, I guess, are we looking at no extra expenditures then?
Nothing.
No, we're looking at needing, the testing piece is one of the big pieces, and depending on which system we use, it's going to be anywhere from, say, $3,000 up to about $7,000 a year for the testing. And then there are some, then the whatever intervention system we want to use. In math, we're looking at, the one that we're most strongly looking at right now is called accelerated math. Based on a math test score, we can identify exactly the areas that those students need help in, and this program takes that data and it says, "Help these kids on these specific areas." That program is going to be about $2,500 a year, but I've looked through what I have left in my budget, and I believe that I can pay for the initial year from that, and then it's something that I'll build in to our ongoing budget cost. The reading intervention is something different. I'm still looking at a couple of different things there, but it should be, you know, relatively similar.
So you're looking at basically, no personnel necessarily increases, but you're looking at expenditures due to testing standards program?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried.
Thank you.
Nice job. Consideration to approve a liaison police officer joint agreement with the City of Cannon Falls.
Oh, this has been lots of meetings, and I'm sure you're sick of my updates on all of this, but it's kind of come full circle. When Sandy Hook occurred, they took all the money that was going to be into the grant that we had started and been applied, or granted, they were going to turn it around and make you use it for security on buildings. And so we couldn't use it the way that we really wanted to use it. So I went to the city council meeting, and I proposed to them offering a police liaison through the city, so that we only need 174 days of the school year, and they need another part-time police officer. It was, it was a good mesh. They've been extremely supportive of that, but at the last police commissioners' meeting, they opted to have us pay for a portion of the police officer and liaison. Although, we know that this is something we want and need, and there's, it just gets really difficult. How do we fund it, and how do we pay for it? The biggest thing that is, that has been a problem here is that they want a three-year commitment from us as well. They don't want to hire someone, they don't want to train them, they don't want to do all that, and I have to respect that and understand that. But I have to tell you, when we do our walkthroughs, both at the elementary and the high school, and do things here, I feel like our school is very, very safe. I don't know if a liaison makes it safer in any way. I think there's other things that we're doing, we're putting and investing a lot of money into a PA system at the elementary that works, where Mr. Hodges, or Mr. Bell doesn't have to hold up two phones, and a PA system in the back that actually reaches the kids when they're out on the soccer fields, and all of those things. To me, that makes more sense to put the money towards that. Ultimately, it's up to you, but if you choose to go along with the proposal that they've offered, we would need about a $10,000 commitment each year for three years. I do not have this in the budget. We do not have the money for it, but if you feel that this is an important thing, we can look at readjusting the budget and finding a cut somewhere else. At this time, I think I would rather hold off, improve the security issues we know we have. We need a camera at the elementary, and we need PA system, and Mr. Hodges is working with Mr. Davison on maybe re-locking and re-keying the high school, because we feel that that's a security thing as well for substitutes and other people that are in our district. I can answer any questions, but that's where, we've had a lot of meetings, and they've been extremely supportive. It's been a great connection with the city and the school, but at this time, we just, I think we can better use that money for other security-type things. But maybe the Board feels differently, and if that's the case, we can move forward with that.
The, as it reads, consideration to approve, so at one point in time, we thought this was locked up, or we thought that it was...
Well, it was locked up at no cost. Obviously, I like things that have no cost, and now it has a cost.
It sounded better when it was no cost.
It sounded better when there was no cost, right. And, you know, it was also one of those things, you know, then we're paying a portion of it, but what if they get a police call that day? Do they leave the school, or are they our employee? You know, it becomes now, if we, if we have a portion of the cost, I want them here all the time, all 174 days. I want them on-site, and I don't want them leaving for any, any call that might, and that becomes now an issue. I just think, you know, if it was a one-year where we could really, you know, at the end of the year, assess if it was helpful, if the principals thought that it helped with truancy, but even the new system that Mr. Hodges is doing at the high school has actually got truancy down. I mean, I just think we're doing some internal things that maybe we don't need it at this time, but I also know that we're kind of coming off of a very national tragedy, and I know that all of you care very much about our kids and want them safe. I just don't know if this is the exact way to do it, but that's for you to decide.
What was the proposal for an officer to be at the school all day, every day?
All 174 days. If we had a day off from school, then they, you know, they may work at where Chief McCormick would have them work a Saturday shift. Like, say we don't have school on Monday, they wouldn't be here, but then he could use them on the weekends when he needs them the most. In the summer, with all the fare and, you know, things like that, he would have another employee on his staff, so. But it would be about $10,000 for the next three years, and when we're going through tonight, we're cutting $1,200 here and $1,500 there, and I don't have it built in to the budget.
Input? I'm still in favor, but I think $10,000 is a little price to pay for that type of security that we would get, and possibly there's not the flexibility like you're discussing, but again, I would feel fairly comfortable with that.
Okay.
It's good to know.
I would want to see in more detail what we're actually going to get, I mean, $10,000, if you could get an employee here every day, all times.
Well, that's a guarantee for the 174 days, the student contact days, they would be here every single one of those days.
And would get called out?
Nope. Not if we're paying for a portion of it.
I know we look at, right, in a situation like this, we look at worst-case scenarios, and is it, I don't want to say it's a new jerk reaction by any means, I sometimes wonder if you put a police officer in the school, if that, if that raises a person's level of attention, makes kids more nervous, because they see the security in the schools, and it's like, well, this isn't a safe place anymore. It is, but it isn't, because every day they see it, and I don't know, and what kind of guarantees do we have if, God forbid, an incident did happen? You know, you don't even want to think about that, but what does that really prevent?
Well, it does create relationships with kids, and I think middle school and high school, especially, you know, younger kids, it's going to be great to build those relationships, but we do have three sites, so, you know, where are they at all throughout the day, too?
Sure.
I just have a question about, in the past, we had some kind of police liaison, what was that like?
It wasn't during my tenure here. So I started in 2001, and we haven't had a police liaison since then. Pine Island has one. I mean, they, they do some great things in the classrooms as well, so it's not like they're just standing around like a security guard, you know, they're interacting with the kids and checking perimeters, and, you know, our admin is around trying to check all the back, and Dave's staff is, that is about checking doors and things like that, but, you know, there would be those kinds of duties as well.
Quick from the principals?
Quite frankly, if it means having to cut more staff, I'd rather have staff and not a police liaison.
I would say the same. I, I do, I agree with what Beth said in regards to, we're doing quite a bit currently to make sure that, you know, we've got things in place, and I don't know that, I, I just think that either way is fine. I mean, really, I think, yeah, we could, I'm sure we'd, we'd use them down at the elementary in any way, shape, or form we could, but...
I'm going to call for a vote.
Will we have any motion there?
I'm, I'm making a motion to call for a vote.
You're making a motion to either approve or not approve this, and then we'll get into that.
Correct.
Okay. Your motion would be to approve the liaison officer?
We have to, I'm going to make a motion that we call for a vote.
Sure.
Third round.
That's basically what you want to do, stop discussion.
Stop discussion, and let's have a vote.
Okay, what would your vote be then? Because we need to have an approval or a disapproval of the, of item, right?
Are you making a motion? We haven't made a motion to approve even the hiring. We could make a motion not to approve the hiring, so which way we want to go?
He's just calling the vote.
I'm just, well, you don't call the vote until after the motion and second. I'm just, well, you don't call the vote until after the motion and second, but that's...
Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pat. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Kurt. So there's a motion, the second, to approve the liaison officer at an approximate cost of ten thousand dollars to the school district. Any other conversation now?
I'll go with the...
Eventually, I think that we do need to look at the situation at that elementary school, and like we talked before, it was never on our radar screen twenty-five or thirty years ago to look at safety when you walk through that door. And I know that in my tenure, we've had people come in and steal purses and articles from our educators alone, and be able to come in and leave. Now, something's going to have to be done with the face of that elementary school at some point in time, and maybe the police officer doesn't fit that, but it is the direction we need to look at.
And I guess I listened to what we're hearing, and there's the security piece, but there's also the interaction with the student piece. I guess the security piece seems minimal at this point. I mean, Dave's still working on some things to secure the buildings better, and you'll use them, but as far as being in three buildings at the same time, it possibly do, is he in the right building at the right time? So I think it's more of the, what will he do with the interface of the kids and that relationship building is, to me, what we're really looking at, not, I mean, I'd rather, I guess, park a car in each parking lot of police squad, because anyone comes to the school and go, there's a squad, and drive away most likely, versus just having an officer in the building that they don't even know he's here. It's like, you put a security sign-up on a house, a burglar will look at that and go, oh, A.D.T. I'll go to this house that doesn't have the sign-up, there's a better chance I can break into that mentality.
You know, Pine Island isn't the only county school that we have. I'm aware that, I think the majority of schools have it, but in listening to my friend that works for the Goodhue County, he cites a number of reasons why it is a reasonable and plausible thing to do. Unfortunately, I can't tell you any of those things. But maybe where our downfall is here, we don't have professional people in here at this time to tell us the pro and con of it. So, we have a motion and the second to approve the liaison officer. And would that be your final say on this? Or would you like to ask an officer to come in here and explain just what good they would do for us? I guess that would be my statement.
I'd like more information.
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine.
Is that reasonable?
Because we really haven't had a lot of discussion on this before.
We haven't had the professional discussion. So often, we get contractors to come in here, and we've got building issues, we have others to come in here who are professionals, and we're just, we're making this decision quite possibly without input from professionals.
I think it's a two, two situations, or two issues that we're addressing here. One is security, one is the interaction. And I've got a good friend who did do this for a while in Pine Island. And I would, yeah, I think he'd be a good resource to bring in and to tell us really what he did every day down there.
And I'll kind of look at that, too, and so then, if we're not looking at the security aspect of it, I guess my concern is, why are we looking at bringing in a police officer for the interaction? Is it just for the interrelationship between a student and a police officer later in life, or, because we're getting away from the security aspect of it, now we're thinking, well, let's bring a police officer in so they interact with the kids? And that's, but, you know, if you want to bring someone in, guys, I'm totally for that, too.
I'm in it for security. I don't, PR is a sidebar to me to security, but that's me. You guys might have other things. So, if we're going to back up, that would, if that's your call, that would require both...
Looks like I'm going to have to...
Pat, what would you like to do?
I don't know if I have a choice.
You do have a choice. If you just want to direct me which way to go, I'll finish it out.
I listen, you guys know me well enough to know, I listen to my administrators, and they're telling me that this isn't something that they would want to spend ten thousand dollars on. They just got, both just got done telling me they would rather spend ten thousand dollars on curriculum and keeping people in the classrooms, as opposed to a liaison officer walking up and down the hallways. I'm all for security, I just don't know what one officer separated between three buildings at ten thousand dollars is going to do for us. If we keep one teacher employed, if we, if it goes to keeping the F.I.E.D., that one F.I.E.D. person in place, that ten thousand dollars, that to me is a no-brainer. I'd love to have a cop in every building, but I don't think it's feasible, and I just got done being told by all three of my administrators that they don't want it. So why in the world would I want to table it?
So your motion stands.
My motion stands. If we vote it up or vote it down.
Kurt?
And if we, and if we want to look at it down the road, we can always reintroduce it at the next meeting.
Well, I think, too, we don't know how it would affect, we didn't know it would affect the budget before, we've talked about it, and if it's ten thousand dollars, and where is that going to come from? What would we be, have to give up for that? Because the security is very important, and we're not minimizing that, but it's a matter of what other cuts would we have to make?
I guess I'd like to see the whole plan, not just throwing an officer to the school, it's how does that whole person work? I mean, it's completely...
Three board meetings, or maybe in four now, I gave you a job description of them, that whole outline, the whole city council meeting?
Right.
It was like a two-page pamphlet of what that person would do?
I mean, I was at a meeting with Tim and Derek, and I listened to their game plan for the future of their buildings, and I really liked that, and I guess, something with that thrown into it. So it's a game plan. I understand the job description, what they do, but how does that fit in with these guys and what they're going to do with their buildings? How does that create the whole synergy and having that apartment? I guess that's more of what I was thinking, instead of just, here's an officer, here you guys go.
I think we've got two issues here, and I think, I understand where you stand with the pad, and everybody else, I know where I stand. I do believe that if people aren't comfortable with the decision yet, that we don't vote, and that if we, there might come a time where we just have to, I think at this point, we can table it. We can vote to table a motion that hasn't been voted upon yet. I think we're legal to do that. I'm sorry, man. But I think if we're not comfortable with it, I think we need to really seriously get the information that we need and then we go from there.
I'll be, you know, I'll tell you what, I'm, you know, I'll, I will rescind my motion. I mean, if you guys are really uncomfortable with this, I will rescind the motion and pull it back, and if you guys want to table this until we can get somebody in here to give us a presentation, or whatever, I'm okay with that. Like I said, I know, I can just tell you that unless, you know, unless something drastically changes, I can tell you that I won't change my mind, just because, again, I was just asked by the three administrators not to do it, so. But I'll pull it, I'll pull it back. I'll make a motion to rescind my motion.
Kurt, second?
Kurt, you're pulling off as well.
What's that?
You're pulling off, you're second as well.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay.
No, what do you do?
We will table this.
We should have a motion.
Motion. Table this.
Yeah, sure. Motion by Kurt to table. Seconded by whom?
Pat.
That's appropriate.
All in favor of tabling this for a further meeting, future meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Wow, a lot of fun.
Now we can talk about fun. Next one's good.
Consideration to hire Joy Sesker for the K-teaching position for 2013, 2014. Interview process...
We'll go up to Derek for that one?
Yes, you know, we went, we did interviews, it's Wednesday before Easter break there. We interviewed seven people, a few from outside the district, and had some very, very good candidates, but the team has decided to go with Joy Sesker, who we are thrilled to have on our team, so, yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to consider to hire Joyce Sesker.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion?
I just want to publicly thank Joy for everything she's done for Cannon Kids and for that program, and I know Jake is shaking his head because he agrees with me. She has been an integral part of a lot of change that has occurred down there, and both my kids had her as a teacher and as a coordinator and a million other things, and she's just, I mean, I know you've all heard it, and Jake is, again, shaking his head, but she's been a really big part of all that, so thank you for everything you've given to that part of your career as well.
Okay, any other? All in favor of hiring Joy as the K-teacher for next year? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Congratulations, Joy.
I was thinking about tabling it, but decided to let it slide.
Only if you make part of the motion, then you can reverse it.
Item G, consideration to hire Renee Otto for the sixth-grade teaching position for 2013, 2014. We've heard some. Anything more to add?
Nope, other than, all my planning doesn't work if you don't do this, so.
The schedule will not work.
And the sixth-grade team is very excited to have Renee. Renee is already a part of the sixth-grade team, she's, they're very excited to have her.
I'll second Rob's motion.
Rob motioned, Pat seconded.
How do you want to rescind?
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Congratulations, Renee.
Thank you.
Consideration to reduce the .6 English .4 special ed for the 2013, 14.
These are ones that we've talked about, and was as part of our discussion last time, so if you have any additional questions, otherwise, I'll just kind of leave them. This is Renee's current position. Mr. Hodges, in his magical powers of scheduling, has been able to reduce this without a staff impact, and we all think that that's amazing, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second. Motion break. Brenda, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to reduce a special ed speech position for 2013, 2014.
You just approved Laura Hema's retirement. The reason why you see a lower amount there as a reduction is because of the reimbursement we get for special education, and I think I explained that at the last meeting, so that's why that number is lower than the other ones.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Pat.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Turning the page, consideration to increase lunch prices by a point, by ten cents a meal for the 2013, 14, per federal mandate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. One more time? We are mandated to increase to a minimum...
Believe it or not, we are mandated to, we have to get to a certain number before 2016, and the only way we're going to get there is if we do five or ten cent increments along the way. Not a choice of Cannon Falls.
So the feds are...
Next year, yep, we'll have to increase it again next year.
Oh, I thought this was going to be a five and a five, and then we rolled it into ten this year.
Nope, nope, we're going to do ten this year.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to cut district-wide staff development for 2013, 2014.
We've already discussed this one to the Breakfast Club, and, you know, eventually, we'll go back to the E.A., depending on what the government tells us we can do as far as set-aside is, but right now, we'd like to reduce that by another twenty-five percent. It's, or twenty-five thousand, it's still more than they currently have this year. Remember, this year, we were at zero, so.
So what percentage is this of their total, the total professional development?
Well, the original was two percent, we went down to one percent, which would have been seventy-five thousand. We've taken twenty-five and twenty-five, leaving twenty-five.
What? Did they have seventy-five before?
There's one percent. Last year, we went down to zero. The staff voted to let it go to zero. Last year, there wasn't a set-aside, we didn't have to vote last year. But we'll see what the government makes us do for this year.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Pat. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? Thanks to the staff for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item M, consideration to reduce paper supplies by, for the 2013, 14. Another discussion from last time.
Yeah, this is Derek getting creative and brilliant, since he's got a good plan in the store for us, so we're very appreciative. He found five thousand in paper.
Make a motion. I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to reduce two cell phones. Had some, quite a bit of discussion on that last time.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Any others, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Well, I would like to, if we can bring those back at any point, since that was what we were doing.
You want my phone now? I think it's somewhere. I'm just excited, I don't have to answer my phone anymore.
Right, yeah, we want, yeah.
I'm kidding.
Okay, facilities update, fieldhouse update. I think we had some discussion, I don't know if it was right after the meeting, during the meeting, about where we go as far as security for our buildings, what, and issues, I guess such as that. I think we had a minor issue in our fieldhouse a day or two after that, which would prompt some conversation about, instead of having possibly a camera in the fieldhouse, having multiple cameras in the fieldhouse to aid us in our security. Dave, are you prepared to speak to that? We're pretty ambiguous right now in what we're looking for, but we have talked about security issues, you and I.
Rob took notes first, too.
Dave, after we get done hearing from Rob?
I thought you'd go with Dave first, and then play that game, Mr. Kurt. We did have a meeting afterwards, and at the meeting, we discussed, it sounds like some of it may have been maybe a little bit overboard as far as the reporting, the issues. The number of issues that we've had in the time this fieldhouse has been around, the number of repairs that we've had to have is pretty minimal. You look at the scope of 365, pretty much eighteen hours a day, in a lot of cases, and it's open, six in the morning, ten at night, sixteen hours a day. I think we had, would you say, three things, Dave, that need to be fixed?
Yeah.
So the concern there for the fieldhouse, as far as things being broken and need to be fixed, isn't as high, I think, as maybe initially thought. But I think there is some issue about people feeling safe walking. There are some maybe out-of-school age kids that are in the fieldhouse at times. We did some discussions, and we really came up with the solution, you know, one option is, we do have a camera in there, and do we, is it worth spending more money on cameras? Do we put a sign-up where they can report instances, incidences when it happened, so that either someone can respond, or Dave has the opportunity to check the tapes later on to find out the date and time that call was made to that number? Different things that we might be looking at regarding the fieldhouse. That hit it, Dave? Is anything?
Yeah, I think the one thing, and probably people do, but everybody's got to realize how much activity is in that fieldhouse every day. Every day, there's probably at least a thousand people that are in and out of that fieldhouse, not to mention the activities we have and stuff like that. Toy shows, wrestling tournaments, basketball tournaments, all that kind of stuff. You have fire ed, you have sports, you have community ed. Given the number of people that frequent that stuff, you know, it's, I've been around here long enough that, you know, like just about everything, there's, it's always one or two, you know, that mess up or stuff like that. To me, it's better to figure out who that is and what's going on and take care of that rather than make everybody suffer for something that some, somebody did. And I don't know, maybe that's, I guess when I look at it, I look at the whole picture. I have to, I have to look at the whole picture. I have to look behind it, in front of it, and everything like that. I have a lot of things that I have to cover. And that's what I look at. Probably being here, I don't know if it's because I like it so much or if I'm still paying my dues from when I was in school. You know, I say you always get a couple and they'll do something. But given the frequency of that fieldhouse, and I mean, it was just like for Easter or spring break, whatever you want to call it, you know, I mean, it basically was wide open. Nobody there. I came back every night at 10:30 at night and it looked like no one was there. So as I see it right now, I mean, you know, if you look at the fieldhouse, maybe you look at the cafeteria or you look outside or whatever, I mean, there's little things here and there, but the fieldhouse, I think we're fine. There are times when our sports season, when we do, you know, people got to be inside and stuff like that. We have a little bit more activity now starting, and now just people just want to get outside. Maybe at that time, you know, look at a little bit there, but to have someone there all the time watching it, I don't know.
Jake had brought up hiring in, I think the first year, 18 months, you said?
Yeah.
And they felt that it wasn't worth the money to put someone in there just to kind of watch. And even if you break it down to just like say six o'clock to 10 o'clock or eight o'clock to 10 o'clock at night, when things happen, hire a high school kid or something. And I know, Dave, you were talking about putting on swipe blocks, so card key access. But again, that develops a whole new, I think, set of problems if we want to go that route. Who gets it access-wise? Who doesn't get cost involved there as well? And part of what I think, I was thinking when Dave was talking is those cameras aren't cheap to set them up. And I'm not saying that we're not secure already, but at what cost? And do those means justify what our results will be if we spent $10,000 on cameras? We spent $5,000 in four years on repairs. The repairs may not go away. The cameras may not fix the problem. So we spent $10,000 plus, we'll still have the vibe.
Maybe there's another way of handling it. Just in the time, and it's, it's not all just people destroying things or ruining things. But I know in the time I've been there just in the fieldhouse and it's, it's probably been the last two, three times I've there, I'm always telling a kid to stop swinging on the curtains. I'm telling another kid to get off the cushions. One kid pulled out the hurdle and tried jumping it and landed right on his head, right off. And it's like, so there's safety issues in there as well. So I don't, I don't know how you have to handle it outside of having something there written because there's other issues that could potentially happen there as well. And I, I don't know, I don't know.
And then I guess we put a camera in, but no one reports it. It still falls down, the kid's still swinging if you're not there. I don't know if a better reporting system would be better for the people who are there.
And there's sometimes there's chaos. There's, there's, people are trying to walk and there's kids on the track. And, you know, it, it's just, there's no order there. And, and you'd like to see some of that, too, because it's kind of, you know, there's safety issues. Kids on the track, people running or walking, people tripping over. And it's just a potential hazard that way, too, so.
Dave, we had a, a minor issue a week or two ago, right after the last time we spoke. Were you comfortable with the one camera system in there picking up everything that you needed to pick up? And would that, would that be able to scan the whole facility?
Actually, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the camera that's in there because it is a motion thing. Right now, it's hooked up to our doors and stuff like that. So if somebody goes up the door, they're not supposed to, it slings right to there and zooms in and stuff. But it doesn't come back. So if I had a camera on, basically if I had three cameras, just ones that were stationary ones, not fancy ones, and all three courts on the ceiling facing down so I can see, so I can see and I don't have to look through curtains, stuff like that, that would give you the full, full line. That would give you a really good coverage.
Jake, you're in there quite a bit. That's part of your, I guess, jurisdiction. Have you got an opinion or a thought on it?
You know, in the wintertime, when it's used so much, part of the problems, it's used a lot. There's practices in there until probably eight o'clock at night, one to three courts being used. So it's not that it's just open and kids are just running around. Sometimes that is, especially during basketball games, home events. But really, in the wintertime, people are in there till 8:30 at night with practices and stuff like that. So it'd be hard to pay for somebody to sit there and supervise, supervise practice, you know, so. And in the springtime, when we paid somebody, the guy who we were paying told me it's not worth it. It's not worth it to pay, so.
I think better cameras, better monitoring would be a good compromise because, right, I don't think we can pay someone to sit there all the time and supervise. But at least having a better camera system would be good, I think.
I guess I get nervous about the investment that we've made in that facility and the fact that we want to treat our citizens right by saying, hey, it's open. But then we leave ourselves wide open to issues that may be in there. And we don't have a clue as to what happened or we're at the mercy of a, a camera that moves around and may pick up. We want our people to use it, but we've all seen people that may not be using it for the right reasons. Getting out of the rain, whatever, so. It would be nice, I would think, if we would spend the money to look at cameras in there in that expense, knowing that we've got, you know, that, it doesn't take long to vandalize a situation like that and cost us tens of thousands of dollars. This is a, a discussion item, so. Can we, can we direct Dave in any, in any way here?
So why not?
Would be, would we be asking him to maybe pick up the cost of the cameras just to see what it's like with no?
Get some pricing?
Yeah.
Is there, there's still really nothing on the walls that are explaining the rules of the, of the fieldhouse. Nothing that seems, you know, that's official, that's, you stick to these rules. So if someone was, for such as myself, I was saying, hey, you guys can't do that in here. It's like, well, show me why. Well, read it on the wall, you know, there it is. There's nothing in there that you can even reference to, to say, look, you can't be doing this, guys. You know, something about the organization or ordiness of the track or, you know, supervision, supervision for parents have to supervise kids over a certain age. Nothing's there. And you'd like something to reference to if you're going to go to someone and say, sorry, so you can't be here without your parents. Or there's nothing there to support that. And, and maybe that would be a, a starting place anyways, you know.
I can take care of that part if you want to look at cameras. And we've already got pricing because we're looking at it for elementary, so that will be. Good deal.
As far as with sign and everything like that, it's always hard just to make that solid sign that's going to sit on the wall or something like that. And we've looked at them and stuff like that and it's got priced on everything. But I think the best way would be to have, we talked about having monitors out in the hallway, program to a computer and stuff like that. And so we could change it every day or whatever. So when people did come to the fieldhouse or whatever, they'd say, okay, you know, these two days are free. But, you know, tomorrow and whatever, we have tournaments here. The fieldhouse will be closed down for that, you know, access. And then, you know, keep going through the rules of the fieldhouse and stuff like that. But it'd be something that you could program all the time. I think would be better use rather than trying to make a solid sign that sits on the wall and see if something else comes up or something like that. And like that way, too, you could spin through, you know, these activities are going to be happening at the school. We got a band concert or we got speech going on or whatever it may be. But always constantly giving that information, I think that would be the best way to handle it. I think people would probably pay more attention to that than just to sign it on the wall.
I think something is on order. I agree with Kurt, just.
I'll get, something, until we get those, I'll get something up until then. I'll do that this week.
Okay, anything else? Anyone else? All right, we'll move down to reports. Board members? Anything? With the possibility that I'll mess this up somehow. We're familiar with the fact that Wendy, our, our head cook, I guess, because of the nutrition served, because of the meals served and the quality, we increased our, by six cents a meal, we were rewarded something federal, federally? We're one step farther from that as we did have a, as part of that, I guess, we had a survey done or we had people come in here to monitor that. And if you remember that, we made it through our bus issues with no demerit points. We made it through, the findings on this were exemplary for our, for our head cook and the staff underneath her. So I think it deserves some recognition that we've all known Wendy has done an outstanding job. But now we have materials to prove that in the form of another six cents per meal because of what she's done. And the, an accolade for, I guess, the performance when the surveyor was here, whatever they want to be called, so.
I don't think Lori, nor I, can find another school that got this. I haven't anyway with the HBL super tenant, so it's, it's pretty remarkable.
We had zero on our findings that, you know, a euphemism for violations, we had none. She does a wonderful job from to back and should be recognized for it. So congratulations to Wendy and the, the staff in both facilities.
Lori works really hard on this as well.
And you're shaking your head, but we know it's, but we know it's true.
She works very hard on this.
Thank you for that. Anyone else for board comments? Otherwise, let's move down to committee reports. Policy committee? Curriculum committee? I know that you meant, because you kept us in the hallway.
Just had a discussion about some of the scheduling for elementary school for the upcoming year, next year, and how that would be appropriated. Also talked a little bit about possibly increasing the school days at the elementary by, was it 10 minutes? 10 minutes, so give them a little bit more time for education. And that would start possibly at eight o'clock versus eight, 10. Okay. Feel free to jump in anytime. And then also talked about the possible integration of iPads over the next several years and what the cost may be and what the practicality of that might be, so. And feel free, anybody wants to jump in, so.
Can an iPad double as a Kindle? I mean, can you get books on an iPad?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Textbooks.
Brenda, anything else you'd like to add to that?
The next meeting is in September.
The next meeting is in September.
The next curriculum meeting, yeah.
Anything else we've mentioned? All right, we're moving forward. Facility committee? It has met. Rob?
Yep. Dave started with a nice presentation of all the major equipment in the, all the buildings. Here's 125 slides that he had, and it's just the major stuff, doesn't count all the minor stuff of what he keeps and maintains. We got to the bottom line real quick, though. For the summer projects, he's got mainly three. Number one is the PA system at the elementary school, so Derek doesn't have to build a phone hanger on his head. He'll have one system, I guess everyone in the Edmen will have that ability to communicate to the elementary and the high school only, but together. So for safety purposes there. He's got a couple boilers that are older than some people we know that need new wet legs. So he's going to do that this summer. That's his number two priority. And then on the west side of the fieldhouse, you actually are there, he's put up the signs and everything, but we just got dirt because the grass can't grow, so we're just going to concrete that and maybe put a bench up, bike rack for the kids, just to make that a little bit better. And when everybody comes in for sports, that's kind of where they come right through. So we'll dress that up a little bit more. Other than that, I mean, he's going through what he normally does in the spring, but that'll leave that for him. But for facilities, that's what we're looking at. Got an energy report you're working on?
We haven't got anything back yet, but it'll be soon.
And that could be for the later on, and Lori, that's really good for that one.
You mentioned bike rack, and I just talked to by a parent here a couple weeks ago about there are no bike racks around here.
The other thing is to do those benches, because so many kids wait for their parents to be picked up there. It's just really where they wait. So I think Dave's got a great idea, putting, you know, the benches across and then you can have the bike rack right there, put it all on a cement slab.
Put it against the wall so it's out of the way.
Perfect. Who would have thought that that'd be everyone's favorite entrance, you know? You, you wouldn't have thought that.
You know the big parking lot there.
Okay, moving down to soup's report. You had that listed on there.
All attached. You guys have the principal of all of our reports.
And also the principals are on there and. Any, anything you'd like to add to those reports they speak themselves?
Congressman Klein came through on Friday.
Really?
Was it Friday?
Yep, Friday, Thursday.
Thursday. And was very impressed with our facility. Asked lots of good questions about security and school, which is. And then went to our AP government class and our AP government kids stumped him on what his job was.
That's a good one.
What do you do?
I'd like to say just one thing about this update with the PBIS. And we, so basically each quarter, we're planning to take some data on the number of positive recognitions that we've, we've done. And just in student recognition of the positives. And, and before I tell you that, the whole, one of the major goals of PBIS is to develop, to develop those habits in kids. We know that takes a while to develop habits. Sometimes easier to develop the bad habits, but we want to develop the good habits. And so over the next couple of years, we want to start developing those. So right now, we're in the process of really making it a point to recognize those positive things that the kids are doing. Yeah, a lot of it is what we, really kind of what they're supposed to be doing. But we want to recognize that so that they keep doing it and recognize it as a habit. So because of that, we've, over the third quarter alone, we did have 33 discipline referrals that came to me. But really, I could say that's only 33 discipline referrals, because we don't have data, but I can guarantee it was, it was much higher than that before this. And then on the positive side, we've had, we had over 4,700 positive tickets handed out to students during that time. And we also had, every week in the third quarter, we, we recognized four students and two staff members that were published in the newspaper. And, you know, I want to say a, a big thank you to just the staff. And it's not just, it's not just the teachers and the, and the, you know, the pairs. It's the custodians, it's the cooks, it's the bus drivers. It's actually some of our parent volunteers as well. So I just, I want to say thank you for, for all of the support in that from you guys and just the community and the, and the staff at, at the elementary. It's just, it's been really good and every time, you know, today I actually, I was, I was, had some other things on my mind and I forgot to make the announcement. I couldn't walk through the halls without the kids getting excited. Seems, Mr. Pope, how come you didn't do the announcement? So it, it's having a good impact and I just, I, I want to make sure I appreciate, give my appreciation to all, all of the hard work, not only of the, of the students, of the staff and, and everyone involved, so. Very nice.
Thank you. We kind of jumped over Dave. Dave, do you have a report for us?
I was just going to talk about some facilities here. I guess the thing is, just so everybody realizes how much, you know, these facilities are used. You know, and it's not just above the fieldhouse or anything like that, it's the whole facility. Like this past weekend, we had, I think it was 350 students from 25 schools with the speech throughout the buildings, plus a volleyball tournament going on at the same time, plus dance tryouts. Another volleyball tournament coming up tomorrow. We got section band choir that's going to be here through all our buildings. And after that, there's a community speech thing. And then, like I say, we have Riddick's case, we have Lori Line. We've got a number of different things that happen through a lot of our facilities, day in, day out there. So just to let everybody know, you know. Do you still have facilities?
Thank you. Jake, do you have anything to add to the report?
Aside from what's in your package, we received a $4,000 grant from the United Way that was just for preschool scholarships again this year. It's actually down from the last couple years that we received. But other than that, busy with summer stuff and busy with lots of reschedules and spring sports. Still, we got a track meet in tonight, otherwise nothing, so.
Okay, thank you. Kaylee?
Hello.
Hi.
First of all, I'd like to start out with just the, sort of the spring play is finally getting going. Jake apparently managed to pull somebody out from Northfield yet again. What was his name, Nikki?
Nikki, yeah.
And they're doing a production, All in the Timing, which is a collection of short comedies. It'll be playing May 9th, which is a Thursday through that Saturday. And it's already casted and rehearsing and everything seems to be flowing along smoothly, as far as I can tell. Speech did have a home meet here last Saturday. We placed second to Lakeville North from Cities. We have sections this weekend, and we're sending 31 people onto sections, which is really nice. And we have our community night, sort of come and see whoever is around to perform and whoever's been working on their things and is prepared at 6:45 tomorrow night. The dance team is doing tryouts, already working hard for another season next year. And the volleyball, the Cannon Crush 13 Junior Olympic, Olympic, I was very wrong. Volleyball team took first at Mankato State last Saturday out of 26 some teams. Choir went and returned on a trip to Chicago. Choir went and returned on a trip to Chicago with a bunch of different events that took up the full three days as far as I can tell. And I know they sang for, they did some sort of like singing event while they were there, I'm assuming for an elementary school or something like that, because I know that's what they've done in the past. Choir and band has the subsection contest tomorrow here, like Dave, Davidson said, from one to six, so it's going to be taking up a large portion of the day. Battle of the Bands was last Friday, as per sort of a bunch of announcements that were around about it. I don't know a bunch of how it, how it went, but I didn't hear anything bad. So it must have gone well. P T A is actually having an interesting fundraiser at the moment. They're using a discount at Men's Warehouse for prom, for people that are renting tuxes for prom in order to fund, I think, their national trip or perhaps just for the entire activity as a whole. The P T O carnival is this Friday at the elementary school from one five to eight. I know there are a bunch of National Honor Society people that are hopefully going to be volunteering there. And it's just generally a community event that raises money for the school. Heard some tidbits that the Walk for Diabetes is going to be starting, there's going to be later this month, on the twenty-sixth. And the theme this year is like kick diabetes, it's sort of a football type of theme. And Stephanie Fox is selling mini footballs and they're encouraging football players to come out and participate in like the football punting, kicking contests that they're having to raise money as well. The Education Foundation night, the winery event is coming up soon, April twentieth that evening. And the I M C has been completely reorganizing itself and is actually experiencing a book liquidation right now. So if you are in need of old books, that's where you can find them. That's it.
Wow, an extremely busy strength.
That's about all the sports.
Yeah, true. We're going to be playing baseball in July, I think.
Upcoming meetings. Next one is four twenty-two. And among the items that we're going to deal with at that particular meeting are the transportation assessment. Are we able to deal with item L at that time?
L, and then it'll be Andy Sandstrom will be in for the transportation assessment. And then I'll also get Chief McCormick to come in and do a quick question answer.
So McCormick would be one.
Did you get that Lori? We'll do McCormick, Andy.
And the one O P E, discussion, action item.
Yep.
Anything else that you would like to see at that meeting? If so, and you can't think of it at this time, just let Lori or Beth know and we can get it added. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to any concerns relating to the district? Have an opportunity. Michelle?
Thanks for letting me speak, to kind of voice out of my concerns. I think that all of the school board members know what I'm referring to. I'd really like the incident that happened on my roof to be discussed with the school board. I've requested a meeting previously and was turned down for that meeting. I would really like to be seen in front of the board so we can discuss and clear up any inaccurate things that have been put out there.
Okay, I, I don't know if we're needing to respond to that. We will certainly take that. And I guess Beth, I would look for you to have some discussion as to what our needs are there for.
I can reference our lawyer again, and I told you what she told me before would be to not discuss that at a public stance of sorts. I will let her know that you've requested that and to see what can, we can do with that.
I, I did not know that you had discussed that specifically with your lawyer, and I'm not necessarily asking to speak at a public, but I would like the school board members, the transportation reps to get together and get this discussed. I think there are many underlying issues that need to be discussed here and this, some of this goes beyond the transportation committee or the transportation department. And I just really am fighting here to get the truth out there. There, there have been many things in writing that haven't been accurate. While there, people have been misinformed or I don't think it's intentional, but there are many inaccuracies and I need to have those resolved.
I, I will talk to her tomorrow about that. It's a personnel issue, so we typically don't go to the board for those, otherwise we would be inundated with those. Let me chit chat with her and see what she has to say. I don't know if she would want to be present on that because it becomes a personnel issue and she drafted the letter that you received and things like that, so I don't know if we'd want her to be present. It's just a personnel issue and we try to keep that away from board. Open forums, it's uncomfortable for other people and it's uncomfortable for our board members and something that's more related to just you. And what you're requesting is a meeting with all the board and that means you've got a forum of board members. If you did just the transportation group, then that's two and it's not a quorum of sorts. So if we have everyone in the room, everyone in the town is allowed to come to that meeting. And that's just the legality of it. We can't have a meeting that you request with just board members. It, it can't happen. So let me talk to her and just see, we can even call her together if you feel more comfortable with that. If you want to set the time to come up tomorrow, we can call her together and see how she feels about that.
That will be fine.
Okay.
Kind of disappointing, you agree with all this too? If it's, if somebody wants to take it to a board, there's things that aren't resolved at an administrative level. Does, does employee, whether it's teacher or bus, bus committee, can they request it, take it to a board meeting? Is that right?
They, they can and typically we make it a closed session at the end, like we have in the past if something comes up. But let's just, I, I feel more comfortable going through our, our lawyer with this, if that's okay with the board.
I think it's the way to go. Okay? Anyone else wants to speak? Okay, we'll close that area. So we have three items for our upcoming board meeting for sure, and whatever else that you might feel fit or the admin would like to add. Anything else for the cause? Well, you know, you're right. You're right.
I've been wanting to put it on there for a really long time.
And I've been stopping that for a really long time.
I didn't notice.
My board chair and I.
Well, you know, referendum discussion is warranted. We've had two, in our last two, we had about, what it seemed like about a year and a half campaign. And then the last time we had probably about three months.
Right.
And neither one passed. But, you know, maybe we need, we need to have that discussion again, absolutely. And you're right, it, it, you know.
What I'd kind of like to see is get through all your reductions first. Any expenditures that you plan on spending, you know, if you did go with a police liaison or if you make more reductions that are post tonight, I'm going to be able to give you a lot better projection model if I know where all that's at. So my recommendation would be get through April, do these reductions, do any additions. Let's figure out, you know, are we going to do a bus? What are those kinds of things we want? Get that projection model so it's accurate versus, well, it'll depend on what this happens. What if the legislature comes back and tells us that we're going to get ninety-ten? You know, if they're going to come back with some of that. So maybe May would be good.
Because I thought the cuts were done, so we kind of, I was going to ask him for a recap of now that we've done the Schedule Three, next meeting.
Well, you still have a big one next.
We still have that.
You have a pretty big one next month. And it sounds like you might be maybe doing some more expenditures, which I don't have in there yet either, so.
Well, you know, I always, I always wanted to wait until after the legislative session is done, because I think we read much more about what our needs are after that. And if we do it beforehand, it may, it may not be in our best interest. That's always been my plan.
Do they close May twelfth?
They just, they just talked about being a little more than half done, it seems like, two weeks ago, so.
Okay. For some reason, May twelfth is sticking in the head, so.
I was hoping maybe try a different approach, at least coming up with the number of a referendum, which would require these three to do more, well, a few more people to do work and give them the time.
And again, I think if we, if we look to see what the legislature is going to provide for us, we'll have a better handle on what we need to ask in addition to. So, anything else? If a motion to adjourn? Pat, I didn't even ask yet. A motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt, is a motion to adjourn. Any other discussion?
Yeah, no, just kidding.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.